Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, December 11, 2013. Please arrive in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with Mass General laws, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the East Long Meadow Cable Access TV and also by the Selectmen's office. And I have to ask if anyone else in the room is recording it. Seeing no, none, we can proceed. Our six o'clock appointment is Jim, is it Gendrysek or Gendresek?
Gendrysek.
And I'm half Polish, I apologize.
For being half Polish?
No, for not knowing the correct pronunciation. All right. How are you, Jim?
Come up.
Come on up, yes.
Such a long reach.
How you doing?
Hi. Amber? Nick? Lorraine? John?
Angela.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's all right, I got you.
How are you tonight?
I'm good.
Good. And you work here tonight regarding the ambulance service?
I am.
Okay.
I have a prepared-
And let me just preface this by saying this is a public forum, so just to let everyone know that. So now you can proceed, sorry about that.
That's all right.
You're not first.
I have a-
What's that? I did that.
I have a prepared statement.
Okay.
Thank you for this opportunity to inform you of my intentions regarding a serious matter. My name is Jim Gendrysek. I have lived in our town for 20 years, the last nine residing at Village Green. I became a nationally registered emergency medical technician ambulances rated in 1976. 1981, I began employment with Charter Ambulance Service, which at that time was contracted to provide emergency ambulance service to the town of East Long Meadow headquartered on West Wood Ave. In 1983, Charter Ambulance Service was purchased by the late Frank W. Gendrysek Jr., then headquartered on Page Boulevard in Springfield. Shortly thereafter, I became Director of Public Relations for Gendrysek and Mercury, Inc. In 1990, I was promoted to Vice President of Marketing and Community Relations. In 1991, East Long Meadow's emergency ambulance service provider, Eastern Ambulance, abruptly ceased operations, effectively abandoning the towns of East Long Meadow and Hamden. Shortly thereafter, I signed with the towns for contractual emergency ambulance service at the paramedic level of training. For 10 years, I was responsible for all Charter Ambulance Services service contracts, of which all contracts prominently stated all charges, fees, and rates, which would be invoiced to the patient and/or their insurance providers. In January 1995, Charter Ambulance Service was sold to Ambulance Systems of America. On January 1, 1996, American Medical Response purchased both Ambulance Systems of America and Commonwealth Ambulance Service, essentially becoming the only private ambulance service in the Pioneer Valley. To the best of my knowledge, AMR has been providing EMS to our town and Hamden under contract since that time. Said contract was renewed by this board in March of this year. There are no rates, charges, and fees to the patient in said contract. I have documentation which shows patient charges dating back to 2011, which quite frankly, in my opinion, are astounding and excessive. The current contract, of course, contains no checks and balances, oversight, and recourse. AMR is free to charge whatever it wishes, which could only change on a daily basis. My goal is multifaceted. One, the Select Board issues an RFP and an RFQ on or about January 2, 2016. Two, said responses must be received on or about February 28, 2016. Three, be awarded on April 1, 2016, to become effective July 1, 2016. Said responses must include but not be limited to: the annual charge to the towns, if any, payable on a monthly basis; the fees, charges, and rates charged to the users of the service, the patient; a commitment by the awardee, under contract, to establish a division within the town of East Long Meadow, centrally located, which contains two heated ambulance bays and crew quarters. I am hoping that you and your advisory committee will work with me on this manner for the betterment of the towns and their residents. I hereby offer my services to the Select Board, should you so choose, free of charge, in drafting the aforementioned RFQ and RFP. My health is not good. I don't have the energy and stamina to fight you on this. It's time to do the right thing.
Thank you.
Here's your copies.
Thank you. It's definitely something we will take a look at.
Any questions?
I think so, yeah. You've sort of hit all the, all the high, you know, all the important points.
Actually, I do have a couple of questions. Okay, you wanted to have a satellite established here in East Long Meadow of two cars?
Two ambulances, right.
Two ambulances? Heated? I'm sure there's-
Sounds good, but is there another reason behind that? Other than just that it's good practice?
Oh, it's better than good practice.
One of the benefits, I guess I meant, for labor.
Your current provider uses what's called mobile posting. Mobile posting is great for statistics, but in not necessarily in order of importance. It wastes energy, it wastes resources, and it takes a terrible toll on the EMTs that are sitting in an ambulance for an hour, two, three. Charter ambulance, in the 12-year history that I was involved, never, ever condoned or conducted mobile posting.
Okay.
Now, you notice in there, and I don't mean to nitpick, but I put in cruise quarters. 20 years ago, every ambulance service provided a bedroom, private bedroom, for every EMT on duty. It wasn't the law, we just did it. I'm not necessarily saying that. I don't expect AMR or any other service to provide sleeping quarters. They need to provide crew quarters. Crews have to rest. You just can't put someone in an ambulance for three hours, let them do a couple of transports, and then come back and sit in the same place for another hour or two. It's terrible. Ask any EMT that does it, really. The other thing I'd like to mention, and I know we're running out of time, but there is a whole other side to this, which I did not put in here, but it is something to think about. To the best of my knowledge, East Long Meadow is the only town in the greater Springfield area, with the exception of Hoyoke and Springfield, that does not have its own emergency ambulance service. Rule of thumb 20 years ago was, if you want to put a new unit on the road, a brand-new unit, including the vehicle, equipment, supplies, the people, the salaries, the insurance, the cost was quarter million dollars. Now it's probably 100,000.
Four, maybe?
It could be.
I had heard that, because I was going to ask you about-
It could be that high.
Having our own service, so.
Yeah, I, I, being in the private side, I can't sit here and say I recommend your town service over private. I can say, just look around. They all offer 24-hour service. Now, I have absolutely no doubt, and I should have called them before I said this, but I'm pretty sure Chief Madison will back me up on this. Ambulance services, public ambulance services, town-run, city-run, they're not designed to be moneymakers. You don't take the money to the bank and collect interest. But they are self-serving. They're self-sufficient. And let's take it another step. You implement your own ambulance service, after a couple of years, you, the books start looking good, you make some money, okay, now it's time for a 24-hour firefighter service. I'm not saying you have to wait for your own ambulance service to phone firefighter, but it's, it's a process.
It has the potential to do that.
It's a process. I can help you with many things if you want. I can help you on the private side, of course. I've known Eric for 25 years, he's a great guy. I don't know the new chief anymore. But two years from now sounds like a long time, 2016. It's not.
It's not.
If you start now, by the time it comes around, you, you should have something very definitive in place.
Now, how many, how many ambulance services are there in our immediate area?
To the best of my knowledge, there's AMR, there's Ram out of West Springfield, there's Alert out of Chicopee, there's National out of Springfield, there's Pioneer Valley up in North Hampton.
Okay, I was just wondering, because if we decide to go up for an RFP, obviously, I was hoping there'd be some sort of competitive base and not just like two, you know what I mean? So at least you can name five there, so. I'm sure of all different degrees of size and efficiency, so.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get five bidders. But when you do, make sure you're sitting down when you open their RFQs. It's not cheap.
Yeah.
Now, I know, correct me if I'm wrong, that the town currently doesn't pay any kind of stipend or whatever to AMR.
Correct.
But then again, there's other things that they should be offering that they're not, which I referenced in here, which I'd be glad to talk to you at a later time. When I signed the contract 23 years ago, it was for $47,000. Do I expect it to be that now? No, of course not. But my father used to say, you pay for what you get and you get what you pay for.
I do have one more question. You had mentioned, because right now we don't, we don't get charged, our town does not get charged for our ambulance service.
Right.
So you said to, for them to charge us on a monthly basis.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. What I meant by that was, every contract I ever wrote, municipal contract, the provider was paid by the town on a monthly basis. That's, that's all that meant.
Okay. And so, as opposed to a yearly, is there?
Right.
Okay. Is there a particular reason?
Cash flow.
Cash flow, okay.
It's easier for the ambulance company.
I'll just ask. You know.
All right.
Don't know, ask questions.
That's right.
Okay.
Great. Thank you for, obviously, your insight, and we will take it under advisement.
Okay. Nick knows how to reach me.
Okay.
And I, like I said, I live at two minutes away.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Formalities.
That's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Travel safe.
Miss. All right, our 6:15 appointment. Are the, are the new substitute managers for 99 Restaurant here? Come on down.
Mm-hmm. Come on down. Hi. What's your name? Ricky, thank you. Hi, good morning. Congratulations.
So tell us, you are the new, you are both the new substitute managers for 99 Restaurant, from what this says here, so, okay. Let's see, from what I understand, all the paperwork is on file and okay, Nick, so we have no problems with that. So it's just a matter of basically approving. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say as far as, as far as the restaurant or anything, or any plugs you want to give before, before we go on. It's totally up to you, you don't have to, but I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Have you, have you been a manager before?
Yep, I, total, I've been a manager with 99 for about six years now.
Okay.
Are you from a new store?
I started off in Pittsfield, and then I actually moved to Virginia Beach for a while, and when I came back, I've been in East Long Meadow.
I just got back from Virginia.
From Virginia Beach to East Long Meadow.
Yeah. So you bought a winter coat.
Yeah. Had to pull it out of the closet, yep.
Throw out the flip-flops.
Well, it's a great store.
I've been at 99 for four and a half years.
Four and a half years. And so you're new to this one here in East Long Meadow? Is that what it is? Okay.
And from what I understand, it's, it's a thriving enterprise.
Yes.
I know you're, you're district manager, so. But enough about that. But anyways, so anyway, all we have to do is make the approval, right Nick? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Rebecca Beggs and Kristen Kinnis?
Yeah.
As new substitute managers for the 99 Restaurant in East Long Meadow.
So move.
Second?
Any discussion?
No discussion.
Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Very good, congratulations.
Sure will be.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Maybe too much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is the new substitute manager for Elm Crest Country Club. Oh, I've seen her at least once or twice, how are you?
Good to see you.
Really, I'm Jack.
Hi, Jack.
Are you Jack?
Me, yeah.
I'm Jack.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, so I know you've been there at least three years. I know you want to ask, if you want to tell us how long you've been there, but it's been a while, hasn't it?
Well, it's been 34 years.
Has it been?
Yes. I started when I was five.
I was going to say that, but you're beating me to it.
Absolutely. I can't tell you how many eggheads I've been and weddings there.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to work there one summer, so it's been a long summer.
That's great. So obviously, you know, you've been there a long time, you know what's going on, so I don't think everyone knows Elm Crest, so it's, I don't think, unless you want to say something about it, you know? Okay. Then without further-
Jack, you have nothing to say?
I've been there all my life.
All your life?
All my life, it's a life sentence.
Excuse me, is this on tape that he has nothing to say?
Yes, it is.
I know. Oh, good.
We can get you, we can have a copy burned, yes, Donna, get it.
Funny. Said and heard.
There you go. But in any event, I'd like to make a motion to approve Marion, is it Zielakowski?
Perfect.
I got her name right.
I was wondering.
I'm getting better, I'm starting to get nervous up here. As the new substitute manager for Elm Crest Country Club.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a bunch. Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
I know, well, it's tough here, you know? I know. Next, I don't, we're not sure if, are the people from the Nadeem's here? We will move on, if we can set them up for next week, Nick will figure if you'd like. Joshua Garcia, would you like to come up? Joshua's the Municipal Services Coordinator for the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission regarding the HR study.
How are you? Doing well, thank you. Nice to see you.
Some things come together.
Hi, Joshua.
Good to see you.
You didn't recognize her, Congress Street.
I did not. Well, I told, I said you looked familiar, and, you know, it's the lighting.
I thought it'd catch up sooner or later, so. No hard feelings.
No, thank you.
How are you tonight? I'm doing well, thank you.
That's good. And you work here regarding, we had commissioned you folks to do a study about human resources and sharing responsibilities and things, so.
Sure, sure.
I know we have a, we have a report, unfortunately, it's the first time I've gotten this. Quite a feeling to fill us in.
Yeah, sure, I mean, I don't know if you had the opportunity to look through it and had any questions for me.
Yeah, we just got it today.
Did you just get it today?
Yeah, just trying to give us an overview.
No problem. So earlier in the year, there was the, the town of East Long Meadow and the town of Lolo requested the LTA funds 2013 to conduct a feasibility study to share, to potentially share a human resource department. So with that, my predecessor, Wendy Foxman, who left probably around April or so, I picked off from where she left off, and what we tried to do was, or what we did, actually, was we met with both town administrators, town managers of both towns, and tried to get a feel of what the human resource functions, how the, the basic core function of the HR is carried out through, throughout the day in the individual towns, and seeing if whether or not it's actual feasible, because there's no systematic set structure currently, like the internal HR department, and individual departments, and some folks have HR responsibilities that they carry, carry out the day-to-days. So what we tried to do was just kind of study a little bit and see if whether or not it was feasible to actually share if that was an option. With that, we also looked at other communities that were around the same size as East Long Meadow that do have a HR department, and see what they spend, how many HR folks they have on staff, what's the annual cost to have that full-functioning HR department, and try to provide a comparable if, because I know both communities do have an ambition, well, from what I hear, do have an ambition to build an HR department, to see, to get a feel of what the cost would be like to have a full-functioning HR department, and comparing, comparing it to what it would cost to share it. I did want to make note, though, that this was a feasibility study, we're not here to promote, to do, share, it's just for your information, in case that was an option.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I couldn't find anything, any other model or any other community doing this currently, so suppose if East Long Meadow and Lolo was to do this, it'd be, it'd be the first.
Another first?
It'd be the first.
It'd be the pilot program.
It'd be the pilot program. So with that, we, after looking into everything, it would be rather costly to have a full-functioning department at one shot, so we recognized that East Long Meadow does, is ahead of the game since you have a benefits manager on staff, and Lolo doesn't. So we figured if, if, if we, if the two towns were to start somewhere, share the cost of the benefits manager.
That's got enough to do.
Yeah, right. And when it comes to sharing services, it is a process, it's not something that you can set up six months from now or next week. It would be something where both communities would have to come together and probably, you know, maybe do a two-year, three-year plan, and trying to get a functioning program going before you actually hit the ground running with a benefits manager, with sharing a benefits manager, in which way it would be recommended to have a, if this was a route that both communities wanted to do, to create a committee to oversee that process. So with that, that's the report. I don't know if there were, if there are any questions from you currently, go ahead.
When you say a department, what does a department look like? Because when, I think department, I think multiple people. Are you talking about a department of one, department of five?
It'll be one department.
Because I got a glance at some of those numbers, so I would like to know what that represents.
So for, like for Long Meadow, for instance, they have three full-time and two part-timers. One of them's a benefits manager, the other ones like, would be the director of HR services, and you have a specialist, you have a clerk. That's what a department would look like. And there's a wide range of responsibilities when it comes to HR, file retention, benefits manager, do, taking, keeping track of the benefits, and, I don't know, off the top of my head, it's a new board, I'm sorry, but.
It's all right.
Yeah. No. Obviously, you looked at the structures of both towns, and you saw that we had a benefits coordinator, and Lolo doesn't. When you did your study, did you look at the workload that these, you know, these different employees had? Because as Selectman Thorpe said, our, from what we understand, our benefits coordinator is, is straight out, so I, I don't know-
Absolutely.
-in this scenario how we could share her, unless we gave her an 80-hour week, you know, I mean, it's just-
That's not nice.
No, I know.
Okay, she's, I think she's already at that.
But that's, you know, that's just sort of, because obviously, we were trying to, when we started this, we were trying to, because we had, as you probably know, we had an HR coordinator that was a consultant, on a consulting basis a few years ago.
I think Nick was told.
And the town, yeah, the town decided not to, once, when we went to get the contract renewed, the town decided it wasn't in our best interest, and obviously-
Sure, sure.
That we didn't get it funded. So, so here we sit, but we realize the importance of it. But I don't think, I mean, I'm just thinking in rough terms, and obviously, I know you put a lot of work into this, but I don't think that stretching our people more thin is going to help the situation, if, you know, so I, that's just my opinion, I don't know.
Right.
I don't know if there were any other alternatives that we, that, you know, could have been presented, so.
Absolutely, and that's usually, of course, a concern for communities when it comes to sharing anything. But if there is any information that you can make use out of a packet, would be to compare costs, and if you're looking to expand your HR department, seeing what other communities are spending, and see what Lolo can do differently internally, maybe a five-year plan as you continue to grow your HR department. Because like I said, some, some, the communities that have a full HR functioning department with all, with the staff necessary and so forth, they're spending probably, at this point, 200, to 250,000 a year. Right? So to get to that point, obviously, you wouldn't be able to budget that for the next year, but you can build on that. You know, I, I hear that, I don't know if she started yet, but you're hiring a part-time person to help the benefits manager.
Yeah.
That's a start.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, that information is in there also.
Okay, great.
To see what other communities are doing, and how East Long Meadow can plan ahead, if you're looking to expand your ambition of having a full HR department.
All right. Great.
And I have it in color.
Yes, I was, I was waiting.
And this is only a final draft, I was waiting to give you guys the opportunity to comment on it, to see if there's any changes.
Yeah, and I need, I need a little time to digest it.
Yeah.
Before I could put it into a binded copy and send it to your records.
Is it possible to get a PDF emailed to us as well?
Sure, absolutely. I can send it to Nick.
We do. Nick took care of it.
Yeah, what we'll do is take, we'll review it, and go back, you have any questions, and we can go from there.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you, thank you so much.
While Joshua is here, not to put him on the spot, he's also the point person for the shared nurse, and I noticed we have that later on in our-
In the Board of Health.
In the Board of Health, if he wanted to give a quick update while you're here, I might as well.
Good use of time.
So-
There you go.
Handham County ranks, ranks last in the whole state in public health. So my predecessor with a small, with a mini grant from DPH, got a consult from the Department of Public Health, and they got together and, and applied for a Community Innovation Challenge Grant to, to create a shared public health program. 245, 240,000 was applied for, they only got 45,000. But with that 45, an initial startup phase of the program was able to be created. And with that eight municipalities signed up, including East Long Meadow, in which where, with that 45, we were able to hire a part-time, shared public health nurse who provides an assistance as needed to the participating municipalities. This program's a little different than any other regional program, because this is, Handham County is a very unique county, demographic-wise, compared to other counties in the, throughout the Commonwealth that are creating these regional health districts. This wouldn't be a health district, this is more like a aleckhart, how would you call it, cafeteria-style type program, where if you need a shared, if you need an assistance with a shared public health nurse, she's available. We just put in another application to expand this program, in which where it would include doing a community health assessment within the participating communities, a public health educator, as well, as well as a Board of Health agent. For any community that's participating in this shared program does not mean that you utilize all, you have to choose, that you have to use all programs. If you need nurse assistance, but you don't need Board of Health services, then you only use the nurse assistants. This is no different than what communities do currently when they contract their services. This is a symbol, the same concept, the only difference with this program is that Handham County is at the table. You're not just contracting with anyone or anyone, you have all communities coming together and steering, really trying to raise the needle here with Handham County being last in the state.
So, and just, just for a listening audience, this is no, there's no cost to this for the services that they're providing to our town, and so.
The Community Innovation Challenge Grant will seed money to, to start it, and see
So, and just for a listening audience, this is no, there's no cost to this for the services that they're providing to our town and so.
The Community Innovation Challenge Grant will seed money to start it and see where it goes and see how many communities we can get on board. Once the grant runs out, with the seed money, it's supposed to allow us, it allows us to look into setting up an appropriate fee structure and what the cost would be and seeing where the needs are, who needs the services the most and so forth. And once the funds run out with the information we've allocated, we can determine that at the end. And it's anticipated that if the shared nurse is needed for the assistance, the more communities that participate, the lower the cost would be if they need that assistance. But it's aleckhart-type style.
Okay.
So if it's up and running and full functioning and running well three years from now and you need a public health nurse, you'll be able to have an on-board program to contract.
And you have a steering committee meeting on December 12?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, and that's on the second floor in the large conference room. And I will be there. You get to have me this time.
Absolutely.
But we'll get back to you as soon as again. But thank you so much for stopping by.
Yep. No, great.
Great job. It's very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll see you again.
See you tomorrow.
Nick, does it matter if we take appointments out of order? I mean, earlier, if they're here? It shouldn't, right? Jeff, we're like a half an hour early for your appointment, though. I'm sure it wouldn't bother you if you came, if you came up earlier, would it? Okay, why don't you come on up? Our next appointment is Jeffrey Buzell, the new owner of JB's Ice Cream Factory. And I met Jeff before and we made the comment that.
No samples?
Oh, we made the comment that his initials are JB. After an extensive search, they found someone with the initials JB to take over the business and it worked out great.
You stole the basis for my joke. I was gonna say, I was gonna buy GE but I haven't changed my name.
All right, how are you tonight? So what we're doing tonight is we are approving various licenses for you and your hours of operation. Now, all these are being approved. The acting health agent's approval is pending the completion of a ServSafe certification and there was one other sanitizing procedures which.
Yeah, I have to get some, either one of two ways. The sanitizing agent that they were using for is only for the ice cream machine and you have to have, you have to use one for the sink process.
Okay.
So it's either get that, or if you're going to be using bleach, you have to get these bleach strips to indicate that you're using it on bleach and so.
And then as far as the ServSafe?
The ServSafe Springfield office, there's a course on Monday. I talked to Will Wright Associates yesterday and they sent me the book. I mean, to go through the ServSafe course, I'll know how to make, you know, how long I can leave chicken out and all that stuff, stuff that I'm not going to use over there whatsoever. But, so I'm either going to take the online course if I can get through this book or just go Monday and take the full day course.
Okay, great. And they do, they will give you a certificate, so.
Yeah.
Once you receive that, should we get a copy of that?
Then just make a copy and bring it to work.
Absolutely.
Great. Well, congratulations. It's nice to see it continuing, you know.
I'm excited about it. It's a good business model. And I mean, one of the, one of the things in this country that is, obviously, the mom-and-pop stores are gone by the wayside, but like ice cream shops seem to be a little immune from that for the most part. And obviously, they've got, they've got a good reputation. The Browns and my family grew up three doors down from each other, so.
Okay.
It was, I've been over there since beginning of November, making ice cream, making fudge, learning all the process under their recommendations.
Because their ice cream is bad.
Oh, it is. And I'm type 2 with diabetes, so I'm not going to eat the profits.
And you're still going to keep the Girl Scout?
Oh, yeah. I'm not going to, I mean, that's the whole thing. I want, there's some things I want to do that they don't do, but everything that they're currently doing, I want to keep on doing.
I will look forward to seeing that.
My son already made me a Facebook, a Facebook page for JB's and stuff. So, I mean, they didn't do a lot of social media advertising and.
So you have a Twitter account, too?
The, I hate Twitter. I really do, I really do.
You're not going to hate Twitter?
Maybe, maybe I'll have to, I don't know. I've been, I've been staying away from that for a long time.
Okay.
It's, you know, it's an exciting opportunity. I mean, I know when Jeff started the business, he was much more hands-on, he was there all the time. You know, I come, the last job that I had was running the pizza shop bar for the last four years. And obviously, when you're running a place like that, you know, in both instances, you want to be creating a safe environment for people to enjoy your products. And obviously, I believe a bar is much more difficult than that because there's not that many people that, you know, have a sundae and they say, okay, one more and then I'm leaving, you know. So you don't have to deal with that. And as long as I'm not held liable.
No fistfights.
As long as I'm not liable for brain freeze and people, you know, things like that. You know, so it's, I like the business model. He ran a good business. You know, he's been a lot more hands-off the last few years. And he's admitted to me, I'm sure there's either dollars or product walking out the door that's not being accounted for. And, you know, I'm 44 years old. I was looking for something to, you know, what am I going to do for the rest of my life type of thing? I wasn't going to run the bar forever. It's a crazy work schedule and everything, so this really, really fits for me and, you know, something I'm honestly excited about, you know. And the fact that I'll be there all the time and he hasn't been, you know, I'll be able to, I believe, make the business more profitable.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah. Great, very good.
Do you want me to do the milk and cream?
If you like.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the milk and cream license.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any conversation or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion for the food service establishment license for JB Ice Cream Factory located at 622 North Main Street.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, that's approved.
Well, we have to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry, my bad.
Not that we're not going to approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then the last one, I think the frozen yogurt is my last one and then you do the rest of them. Okay, the frozen, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the frozen yogurt license.
Yeah, I think, does it matter? It's actually frozen dessert. So I know.
Frozen dessert. Why am I putting, why am I stuck on yogurt?
I don't know.
Forgive me. Forgive me.
So moved.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And so that passes.
There you go. And last but not least, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the hours of operation being Sunday through Saturday, 12 noon to 10 p.m.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
I have one question I could bring up. My father and I went to go open a business bank account, but they said that they needed, I needed the doing business as that I get from the town or something like that before, like they wouldn't let me open an account yet.
Do you need, was it, do you need an ID number?
Is that what, I mean, I had my federal ID number, but I didn't have, she said that because it wasn't, even though it's, she said you can't do it until.
Okay.
If you have your federal ID number.
Perhaps it needs to go in the clerk's office, business certificate.
Okay. Yeah, go to the clerk's office for the business certificate. Okay.
At the town hall.
So I could just, I could pick that up from there?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Very good. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Take care.
I'll report to the same.
I'll be there.
But not too much, though.
I won't put, I won't put limitations on me. It's not like alcohol.
Her face isn't going to be there with a red circle and a line through it or anything?
It could be, though.
There you go. All right. Let's see, under Old Business, we have the Eastern Handham County Veteran Services having a district meeting next Thursday.
Next Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday, I'm sorry, December 17th at 7:00 p.m. in Munson at the Town Hall. And I'm the representative, but I can't make that meeting. I didn't know if anyone else in the board could make it, but before you answer, our other option is, I spoke with Rick Green, who's, who basically runs the organization, and if none of us can make it, our town administrator volunteered to go. And all we need to do for him to be a voting member is just have him come with a letter from us, giving him permission to, to go. So then I'll, now I'll open it up to if anyone else wants to go.
I would love to go and support our veterans.
Okay. All righty, so that would be Tuesday, Tuesday, the 17th at 7:00 p.m. on Thompson Street in Munson. Thank you. Our next item, Designer Selection Committee for the tennis courts. Nick, I believe they want us to blow it up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to report to the board. In speaking with the building facilities manager, Mr. Fenny, we went back and looked at the process and the board had previously considered and appointed a Designer Selection Committee for this. And that has been a process that has been used for similar projects in the past. However, in reviewing the law and reviewing the process and then having a subsequent conversation with the Attorney General's Office, we recognized that the more appropriate law in this case would be under Section 3039m, which covers public works procurement processes. Advantages to this process, instead of the Designer Selection Committee process, it is still a competitive bid process. It's a request for proposals. However, it will be managed by the Department of Public Works and, which is very familiar with RFP processes. And there will, there will be a savings of time and money, time because of, well, because it's not, it's more streamlined in a sense under the 3039m. And also with the, with the engineering aspect of it, we're able to use an engineering firm that we have on a retainer under the law that would apply here. So if the board is amenable, you've already assigned, again, you've assigned this Designer Selection Committee. However, it would be our recommendation that the board reconsider that, dissolve that committee and then allow for it to proceed under the RFP process under 3039m.
Can you say our recommendation? Who's our?
Mr. Fenny and myself.
Have you spoken, I'm sorry, through the chair? Have you spoken with any of the other folks on the Design Committee to find out what their feelings were with regards to this?
I have not, and it never occurred to me to do so since the Board of Selectmen is the appointing authority for that body.
So, but this process that you're speaking of is, it's the standard procedure, right? I mean, as far as, you know, the mass law, you know, that you were quoting.
Yes, well, we, we recognize that you could still proceed as planned. The procedure that I'm describing is another section of procurement law that applies to a public works project, and that's what this really is. So therefore, yes, it would still be a competitive process.
Right. Yeah, it's not affecting the bid process.
No, it's just doing it in a different fashion.
So what would that bid process look like?
That would be one that would.
Through the chair, excuse me.
That would be one that would still require advertisements and competitive sealed bids along with evaluations of those bids, again, managed by the Department of Public Works.
And the input from the Board of Selectmen would be?
It would, well.
If Fenny?
I think if the board wanted to provide input, they could, under this RFP process, they could have a conversation with the Board of Public Works and indicate that there is an interest. And then between the two boards decide, you know, how much input and in what manner that the board would have. But this would be, as my understanding, as it is proposed, again, something that would be managed through the Board of, through the Department of Public Works.
Okay. All right. So are there any other?
I would just ask that if we were to go ahead and change the way that we're going to do this in the future to make sure that before we assign a committee, that we look at all of the options before we start down a path and then have to revert back. I think that was.
Okay, yeah, good point. So I'd like to make a motion to dissolve the previously approved Designer Selection Committee regarding the tennis courts.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I definitely would like to have some sort of input from this board in that process.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a follow-up question, then what would be the board's directive from me or would the board be directly involved in speaking with the Board of Public Works for that input?
Um, I, may I?
Sure.
Through the chair. I had spoken with Bruce Fenny and he's willing to just kind of guide if no one else would want to do it, because I was already on that selection.
You were on the committee.
Committee. And so he'd be willing to walk with, allow me to walk and shadow him, and I think that would be enough with the board's permission.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. Very good. Our next item, a board, as we all know, it's budget time. So the Board of Selects, we, every year, we have a meeting with our department heads. It's usually a specific meeting that we go over the budgets for the department heads. And I noticed Nick has set a proposed date here, which if you remember, in January, our first meeting in January is January 7th. And Nick's suggestion would be January 14th, which is the following week. And I would assume we'd have to have it here, because this is probably a planning board meeting or something in, in Town Hall.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know what, how the board feels about that. I have no problem.
I'm available.
With that.
So I'm sorry, through the chair. Are we asking to have two meetings, one on the 7th and one on the 14th?
Yes, but the second meeting is in the regular, the 14th, we're going to be going over all the budgets for the department heads before they submit down.
Okay, I'm fine, I'm available.
Obviously, I'm sorely mistaken.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have to make a motion or can we just tell you that the 14th is fine?
I think that that would be fine. It's at the board's pleasure. I will say that you will be meeting in January, the three consecutive Tuesdays.
Right, because we would have some 21st anyways, so.
I know it, isn't that something?
Just in case there's nothing good on TV watching. Under New Business, unfortunately, we have a resignation letter from Sergeant Richard Bates effective December 20th, 2014. Rick has been on the police force for a number of years and he's done a wonderful job and obviously, we're sorry to see him go, but there comes a time when you reach a certain age and you sort of have to, so.
We have until December 20th to figure something out for that.
What do you mean, whether we accept it or not?
Right, exactly.
No, I think.
I know, we don't have a choice.
That's right. So.
He has served our time.
I like it, I know it. I'd like to reluctantly make a motion to approve Sergeant Bates's resignation letter effective, I assume it's effective December 20th this year for retirement on December 20th, 2014.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Reluctantly. Second with regrets.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Our next item, we have a notification from the library director regarding a position vacancy for library assistant, circulation department, which is part-time, 25 hours a week. And that's being circled, circulated, no pun intended, internally, isn't it?
Correct.
Okay. And if no one internally applies, then we'll post it for the general public?
It'd be up to the Board of Library Trustees, but that would be my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then next, we have a whole bunch of liquor licenses for our approval and signature and so we will have to, we'll go through those later and sign those. And once again, we, unfortunately, we have a resignation of Sandy Mayberry from the Council on Aging effective December 10th, 2013, which was yesterday, so I suppose it'd be a little tough not to accept this resignation. And once again, we'll accept it with regrets. But I'd like to make a motion to reluctantly accept Sandy Mayberry's resignation from the Council on Aging.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
We'll send her a note, right?
Yes, yeah, definitely. Next item, the 2013 Annual Town Report, which is the report that's put together every year that basically is a synopsis of everything that happened in the town during that, during that particular year. And I've been doing this for four years and all I can say is Nick does a fabulous job compiling this and putting it together. He obviously is looking for any input that we can give him regarding this, regarding events of the last year. So if there's, if there's anything that anyone on the board would like to add or help, you know, help in the process, that would be appreciated. Is there anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I would also like to invite people to send in photos. We try to put some photos on the cover, and that would come down, if we receive a bunch of them, they, well, no matter the number that we receive, generally, the board will take a look at them and make decisions as to what goes on there.
Okay. Very good.
They can email them to my email.
Okay. All right, great.
Which is?
nick.brow, N-I-C-K dot B-R-E-A-U-L-T, at eastlongmeadowma.gov.
Great. Thank you, Nick. And now to the Board of Health.
Okay, Board of Health, just want to make people aware of the holiday trash schedule. The East Long Meadow Board of Health announces the beginning, beginning Thursday, December 26th, and running through Tuesday, January 7th. Residents may put out one additional container of trash at no charge. The container or bag must not exceed 35 gallons in size or 40 pounds. Any container or bag, in addition to the two that will, excuse me, that will be allowed, must utilize Town Bags per Waste Reduction Program. Now, we'll probably post this in Town Hall?
Madam Chair, Chairman, my question would be initially to make sure that the board would want to continue this sort of tradition that has been started.
Oh, well, it's free.
For that part.
Okay, sorry about that.
Just generally speaking.
So, so to our board, would you be willing to continue this? This is a service that's being offered to our townspeople that is free of charge, and I will entertain a motion to accept this, you know, offer.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And so that passes, so now you can put out an extra container of trash. Residents are advised that the trash pickup will follow the holiday schedule for the weeks of Christmas and New Year's Day. During the week of Christmas, regular pickup will occur on Monday and Tuesday, December 23rd and 24th. There will be no pickup on Wednesday, Christmas Day, December 25th. Wednesday's pickup will be on Thursday, Thursdays on Friday, and Friday on Saturday, December 28th. This will be a paper recycling week during the week of New Year's. Regular pickup will occur on Monday and Tuesday, the 30th and the 31st. There will be no pickup on Wednesday, New Year's Day, January 1st. Wednesday's pickup will be on Tuesday, Thursdays on Friday, and Fridays on Saturday, January 4th. This will be a container recycling week. Is that good enough? If you have any questions, feel free to call the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, 413-525-5400, extension 1100. Or you may call Allied Waste directly at 413-592-9411.
I thought you were going to get another nick.brow in this.
Well, you know, you could call Nick. I mean, that's, that's his extension, actually, the 1100, so that would work. We did have the update already on the, with regards to the public health nurse. The update with the acting health agent, you did receive that report. Were there any questions on that with regards to that address?
Nope.
Okay, and then I am going to turn it over for an update from Nick with regards to the Mass DEP.
I do not have an update to report to the board.
Okay, okay, so I will say that I did speak with our health agent. She has been in contact with them, and we are, we're not, we are not in violation. Everything's going as, as it's supposed to. Okay?
Yeah, great.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Under Correspondence, we have, we have a letter from Bentley's Bistro regarding clarification of entertainment, and just to, since we've got the letter, we've got it here, I'll explain that. Under their entertainment license, they are only allowed up to a three-piece musical ensemble in there. And they had some advertising in, in the holiday edition of The Reminder, and I guess a concerned neighbor noticed that one of, they knew of one of the bands in question and thought that they had five members in it, and in speaking to the owners of Bentley's, I was told that, and they have clarified this with us and with the planning board, that some of these bands will offer five, a five-piece band at X number of dollars, or a three-piece band at a lesser fee. And these bands knew that they were limited to three, three members, so the band that may look like it's a five-member band is actually going to be a three-person, three-person band when it plays there. So they have clarified that with us and, and the planning board. And obviously, with us, it's the entertainment license portion that is our, is our end of the deal, so, just to let you know. Before we get to Town Council, I might as well go over the meetings and invitations and reminders. Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust Meeting is Thursday, December 12th, tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. at Wolverhampton Town Hall. There's an invitation from Peter Gray, Pete Sweet, 32 Shaker Road, for a grand anniversary celebration, marking one year in business, Sunday, December 15th, at 10 a.m. And the Board of Selectmen, our next meeting is, we, today, Wednesday, December 18th, 6 p.m., in the Council on Aging Media Room.
Check, check that, Mr. Chairman, that should read Town Hall.
I'm sorry, Town Hall. I've done that before. Okay, great. And on December 19th, there are a group of us going to, as the police chief and fire chief had noted in our last meeting, they were talking about the potential of investigating a possible regional dispatch center, and there's a group of us going to Devon's, Mass on Thursday, December 19th, in the morning, I believe, to look at a regional dispatch out there, and then we'll report back on, on our findings and go from there. Town offices are closed at noon, Tuesday, December 24th, and Tuesday, December 31st, 2013, and all day, Wednesday, December 25th, and Wednesday, January 1st, 2014, in observance of the Christmas and New Year's holiday. And we have a Board of Selectmen's meeting Tuesday, January 4th, Tuesday, January 7th, 6 p.m., at the Town Hall Hearing Room. Next is Town Council. Yeah, I did that. How are you, sir? You guys just wave at each other.
Okay.
Okay.
I would suggest to the board that items 22 and 27 would be executive session for, and be discussions with the board under the attorney-client privilege exception to the open meeting law. And that items 25 and 28 would be executive session under collective bargaining issues.
Okay, then why don't we start with 23?
And I would defer to the Town Administrator.
Do you have from Selectman Bronski?
Yep.
Some draft forms for personnel evaluations that were brought to the board's attention at the last meeting, and they're back here.
Just to reiterate, I feel very strongly that we need to be evaluating our employees, setting goals, and reevaluating our employees so that we know that they're doing the work that needs to be done, but also to, to give them the recognition for the good work that they're doing. There are no evaluation processes that I know of that are taking place regularly. The document that I submitted to the board was a draft of documents that I've used in the past with my own staff. I found them very successful, and recognize that you all wanted to have some time to look them over and provide comments, so certainly having them be adapted to better fit the needs of our role in overseeing our employees. Your thoughts and comments are welcome, but I would like to move this forward as quickly as possible.
Okay, great.
I would agree 110% with you there, with regard, excuse me, Selectman Bronski. The, what, there's just, it's an excellent document, but there's just a few, a couple of little tweaks. What I would like to see is that when an individual gets a, receives anything lower than a three, that there be a comment, a mandatory comment underneath.
Great suggestion, yep.
Also, um.
Actually, should, can you? As I say.
Do you want me to send it to you?
Yeah, why don't we do that, and that way, that way we'll get the completed form if we have any changes for next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Fortunately, we have a meeting every week, so.
Oh, yeah. And, and just one, just one other thing that I'd like to mention, other than the other little one tweaking. If there is some sort of a reprimand or a customer complaint, I think that should also be an automatic deduction of some point, so, just judging on the calculations.
So when, when you evaluate, generally going back another six months afterwards, if there's an incident that's documented on, on the evaluation and then documented at the back, when you go back in six months, those issues are documented and reevaluated, so certainly, if issues were taking place, they would be part of that evaluation.
Right, but you know, you know how you're doing the addition and the calculations? I think either you take it at the front end in each category a minus five, or perhaps a total deduction of maybe 10, 15 to 20 points at the end of it. That's something that can be worked out, but I think it's something that we should, certainly should incorporate.
Very good.
In the evaluation, and that's it.
Couple of questions for Attorney Donahue before we proceed. Is item 26 executive?
26 would be, sign it, 26. No, it's just, that's just a notice of resignation, that's all you're receiving.
And if any action were to be taken, because I just want to figure out how to proceed from here, you know, before we adjourn into executive when we do, if any action were to be taken on item 22, that would be an open session, I assume?
If any action were to be taken, yes.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I didn't adjourn to executive only to, you know, come back in here just to adjourn, so. Yes?
A personnel issue, I noticed, is it on here that I had wanted to, or I'll just, I'll defer to the 7th. It's nothing.
Or till next week?
Till next week, yeah. I'll defer to next week. We've got enough on them.
Okay. The next item is the Board of Selectmen staff. You've got the job description drafts, Nick?
Yes.
Okay.
So carry over to the board.
Yeah.
Looking for any comments on the draft job descriptions, and pending any changes, looking to post the positions.
And I was fine with them.
I was fine with them.
De, through the chair? Not to be the point person, but can I just oversee, not oversee, but be part of the interviewing process? Would you mind?
Well, if two of us are involved, that requires us to post a meeting. Is that true?
No, I found out that we didn't have to do that from the last meeting that.
But that's as long as we didn't, you don't talk to each other.
I won't talk to them. I'll do it the same way.
I don't know if Attorney Donahue, can you have two board members?
Because that's what happened at the casino meeting.
Yeah, can you have two board members interviewing candidates for a job position and not have a posted meeting?
I'm not interviewing, I'm just.
Can you have to put two of them there?
You can, well, if you have two there, the problem is going to be that if there's any, any type of discussion at all among the board members, that it's going to create an open meeting problem.
Okay.
I understand that, but the same way that he was at the casino meeting and we had no, we didn't talk.
Yeah, I will tell you truthfully, I felt more comfortable with that because you had counsel present to, to step in if we thought the line was being blurred.
When I wasn't supposed to.
Selectmen, perhaps to satisfy your interest, which I respect.
Thank you.
Perhaps once Nick and I have someone to recommend, and you wanted to, prior to that recommendation, meet that person without me there, I mean, so once we go through the process and we feel that we have a good candidate, if you wanted the opportunity to meet with that person.
Is it possible that I can meet the top two?
I, I don't have a problem with that. We just need to do it separately.
The only, well, that's, the only problem I can, not problem, but the only thing I can see with that is, if we're relying, I don't know if we're relying on Nick and, and Selectman Bronski to choose a candidate. But the only problem is with meeting the top two is I would hate to have you, you know what I mean, like have a, they like candidate A, you like candidate B, and then we have a problem, so.
Perhaps we should have the top two candidates come in and interview in a public forum.
That's not a bad idea.
How do you feel about that, Selectman Bronski?
I'm fine with whatever the board is comfortable with.
Okay. All right, so we'll do that, and we'll see who gets, who you get for applicants, and then we'll, you folks can vet them down to two, and then they can come in front of us, and.
Okay.
Okay.
So for, for Nick's purposes, are you comfortable with him going through, forward with his job descriptions?
Oh, I did, I did job descriptions for a great.
Yeah, okay.
So proceed.
All righty. Next item is the, we have a notice of resignation and our label, Labor Council opinion, and that was an ongoing topic that we've gotten, we've gotten a resignation letter, we've gotten opinion of Labor Council as that it's appropriate.
And your Labor Council's opinion was just as to the effective date of the resignation.
Okay, great. And then our last item is, in open session for this time period, is the letter from our, a letter regarding opening contract negotiations. I don't know if I have to specify who it is, but.
All right, it's really just a notice from, from one of your contract employees asking to enter into negotiations, so we start the process.
Okay, great.
Personnel policy, this evaluation process is timed perfectly.
Yeah, okay, great.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Then going forward, I have a question for the board with, there have been a few of these letters that the board has received recently, and there may be a couple more that are coming. How would you like to see this on the agenda going forward? Maybe a general contract negotiations and then list the positions, so that the board, I'm assuming it will be liaisons who will be speaking with people once negotiations commence and reporting back to the board? Just for sake of organization.
Yeah, that's, I think if you handle it the way you did this one, that's fine, in my opinion. So we know who's, who's asking, and we can go from there, yeah.
The fire chief has already requested.
Yes, but we haven't gotten that formally here, so, okay.
Actually, he said it when he was here.
Oh, that's true too, yeah, yeah.
He did, he did say it for the board.
Yeah, and we actually have a proposal from him, so, okay. I'd like to make a motion to move to executive session to discuss matters relating to attorney-client privilege. Does it contract, would that be contract negotiations or contract?
And the second ones are matters involving issues of collective, related to collective bargaining.
Okay, okay, great.
To discuss them in open session would tend to minimize or harm the town's position with respect to the resolution of the situation.
All right, what he said, to return to open session.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Bronski?
Yes.
Selectman Thorpe?
Yes.
Selectman Federice, yes. All right. We are back in open session, and the one topic we have remaining is the ever-present casino issue. I want to begin by thanking Selectman Angelo Thorpe, our town attorney, Jim Donahue, and Nick Grove, who have steered us through this process, and they've done a wonderful job, and our town attorney has enlightened many people in the, in the casino hierarchy about certain things in their, in their procedure that, that actually has helped out everyone, so he's done a wonderful job.
Through the chair, also our department heads as well?
Yes.
For coming together, you know, and meeting.
Yeah.
When we had a deficit and coming together as a team.
Okay, so we've had, we've had many discussions in regard to this matter, and the, the casino came to us with a proposal, and I will let our town attorney speak so eloquently on his thoughts on this matter, and we'll proceed from there.
If I could, as you, as the board knows, we've had a number of versions of proposed surrounding community agreement that you've reviewed, each one of them, and so you're probably sick of even seeing agreements that have surrounding community written on them. The final agreement that was received yesterday by my office contains most of the changes that the board had requested be made to the agreement. And it is, even with those changes, it's slightly different from the agreement that the MGM has entered into with Ludlow and with AGWAM. The, the significant differences between Ludlow and East Long Meadows Agreement really deals with the arbitration, if there's a dispute over what improvement should be made during the look-back period. And that difference primarily is the result of just a timing between the two agreements being signed. Ludlow's agreement provides that the arbitration will be, if it, if it comes into effect, will be handled under the rules of the American Arbitration Association, which were in some of the original drafts that we had received. And then I'm informed by MGM's counsel that at some point after Ludlow signed, their general counsel in Nevada had indicated that he would, he would prefer having another national arbitration company known as JAMS, Inc. be the designated arbiter for the agreement. So to that extent, our agreement has JAMS as the arbitrator. Ludlow's has the American Arbitration Association rules to be applied. Sort of the segue, AGWAM's agreement also has JAMS as the, as the arbitrator.
Okay.
The only other significant differences in the agreement are the dollars. There's no difference in the dollar amounts contained in the Ludlow agreement and the agreement that's being proposed to you. However, in the, in those dollars, the dollar amounts are that the commission, not the commission, but the MGM will, will pay up to $50,000 of the town's costs in hiring the consultants and fees that were incurred by professionals in reviewing these agreements and negotiating them. To the, the town will submit the bills, and that money will be reimbursed to them. As an aside, there was also previously a, an assent by MGM to give a grant through the gaming commission toward fees and costs with respect to this, $15,000. That $15,000 would reduce the $50,000 to 35, but it's a total, it's still the $50,000 that we receive. The only other real difference with the AGWAM, with the, so the Ludlow proposal is basically that. Without those two changes, that's basically what it is. The AGWAM proposal has the same arbitration provision and has a more significant dollar. The Agwam proposal has the same arbitration provision and has a more significant dollar impact. Their dollar amount over the life of the license that we've paid in installments over the life of the license, which our agreement provides is going to be 15 years, is in total about $750,000 more than East Long Meadow will receive. But I will tell you that the way the agreement is structured, that those upfront payments that we talked about, the million and a half that Ludlow and East Long Meadow will receive over that 15-year period, and the amount that Agwam will receive, are to be used for the town for any purposes that they see fit. But the agreement designates for the town's purposes $75,000 for future mitigation costs that may be incurred in connection with this project.
Excuse me.
And any fees or costs to analyze the, the project or what impact there is. And to the extent that, that money is not used or not needed for mitigation, then it would go to the town coffers. But my recommendation would be until we know what the impact is going to be, that any money you receive under this, which starts when the casino opens annually, each year $100,000, that that should be set aside in a separate fund to determine what the mitigation costs are going to be. There is also in all three agreements, two look-back periods, and by that I mean that we don't really know. We have some thoughts about what the impact is going to be with traffic on North Main Street, and some concerns that there may be impact on, on other aspects of the community, but we really don't have any hard and fast data that supports that. And actually, some of the data from other studies in other communities tends to show that some of our concerns may not really be realistic. So we're getting money upfront to address a concern, a million and a half over 15 years, and then, once the casino opens, one year after it's opened, the communities, currently Agwam, East Long Meadow, and Ludlow, along with MGM, would agree on a third-party entity to review the situation as it exists at that point in time versus what it was today. And you're going to know what the situation is today because those same three or four entities are going to agree on a company to do an evaluation of what the impact, current situation is, and that's the baseline going forward. And in year five, that same evaluation will be done to look and see if there's been any significant changes from the impacts that were found in year one. So the community, I think, is protected by this agreement because if the impacts are greater than the million and a half that you're going to receive, or actually, it's a million dollars and then the other money is for, for costs and expenses, but if it's greater than the money you receive from MGM under this agreement, and you can establish that, then you're entitled to receive that money. And the same for the other two communities. One of the reasons, I will tell you that, and I, as I've advised you, that I don't think that the fact that Agwam is receiving more money upfront should be a concern, is that it appears that Agwam has the potential for a greater impact from the casino, especially during the construction periods of the casino, than East Long Meadow will. And if that's true, then the additional money that they're having is going to be used anyway to offset that, because these payments are used in the first instance to pay those impacts, and then if there's anything over those totals, then you go back to the MGM and/or to the commission for money to moderate those expenses. So that said, even though Agwam may be getting more money upfront, their expenses may be more and longer, so it might work to be a better agreement for the town than Agwam has, but it might not, but that's a possibility. But with the look-back periods and the upfront payment, I think that it's an agreement that adequately protects the position of East Long Meadow with respect to the developments that are going to take place.
Thank you. And I know with any agreement like this, we're not, everybody's not going to be happy, but in, in light of your research, you know, the, you folks, when you were, you know, meeting with everyone and the studies we've seen, we, in some opinions, are a very fringe impact community, and one thing is by, by taking part in this agreement, it secures us as an impact community. So instead of possibly not, not agreeing and going to arbitration and being, being deemed not an impact community where we wouldn't get anything, we protect our interest with this, and in the future, if there are mitigating, mitigating expenses that exceed what we're being paid, we can, we can go after them in the one and five-year look-back. So in theory, you know, you always want to get more money, but I think, I think this plan is giving us, it's giving us some protection, and it's giving us the, A, the, the opportunity to consider it as an impact community, and B, the option to, if there's more mitigating damages, to go after that in the future.
Right. I would just add for that, that I do believe that East Long Meadow has a, a solid position with respect to being able to establish themselves as an impacted community independent of this agreement. However, the signing of this agreement avoids the uncertainty and the expense and time of trying to establish something that you're getting now without-
Jumping to the ropes.
Sort of getting into an adversarial position with the people that were hoping we're going to be able to work a good working relationship within the future.
Yeah, okay, very good. Thank you, thank you for your hard work. In light of that, I would like to make a proposal, or make, that the town accept the agreement as presented by, I guess it would be MGM Casinos and Blue Tarp Redevelopment, or would it just be one or the other?
It's, it's Blue Tarp Redevelopment LLC. In the agreement there referenced just as MGM, but it's a, it's a separate LLC company.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the Board to move to accept the, the proposal set forth by Blue Tarp Redevelopment LLC.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
I just want to reiterate, thank yous to our town, our department heads, our attorney, Nick, and MGMs for working this out. I think this is an opportunity for East Long Meadow, and I do believe that we are covered against any negative or adverse effects that could happen because of the casino.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add to the discussion, I think an omission of the head and not the heart, but appreciation also for Mr. Kingston's work.
Oh, that's right. Absolutely. Mr. Kingston worked very hard, absolutely.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Also, would suggest that the Board consider signing, voting to authorize the Chairman to sign the grant from the Massachusetts Gaming Commission to offset expenses related to the negotiation of this agreement as well, and the, just a clarification letter that was received from MGM in connection with this project.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to allow myself to sign the, we got the, the grant letter from the state and the, we got clarification letter from MGM, which I think we're all going to sign anyways, I believe.
I thought we were all going to sign.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Anything else? Move to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
Exactly.
All in favor? Aye.